I called a 9 o'clock. Meeting April 4th open, and good morning, everybody, and welcome to the meeting today. Our invocation will be Commissioner Williams.
Yes, can we please bow our heads, please? Lord Father, we thank you for all that you've done just by waking us up this morning. You've done something great. We ask that you keep us covered, keep our county covered, and allow this board to make the right decisions. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello.
Has everyone had a chance to read their minutes?
Yes.
I move approval of the minutes, March 21st.
We have a motion on the floor to approve March 21st minutes. All those in favor, vote. Sorry, hold on. Before we can continue, could everybody please silence their cell phones because we have a long meeting today and it would save time if we didn't have any interruptions. Thank you. All right, any discussions or adjustments on the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, we'd like to add Budget Amendment 456 to the consent agenda under budget amendments, and I would also like to add under number 16 of the consent agenda with attorney approval and the appropriate budget amendment.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve, or do we have any discussions on the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the April 4th agenda with the 456 budget amendment and the consent agenda number 16.
And may I add, Madam Chair, item 16 with approval of the attorneys and item 18 with appropriate budget amendments.
All right, any more discussions? All right, we have special presentations.
Okay. All righty, we'll move to our 9:00 AM public hearing. If you don't mind, Madam Chair, to receive public comments regarding a proposed installment financing agreement or similar financing agreement to finance a new DSS and health facility for the county of Wayne, the Board of Commissioners may choose to take action following the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing, Madam Chair. Okay, we will now open the public hearing. Any comments? Anyone would like to speak? There being none?
There's no one present to speak at this public hearing.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. We got closed public hearing. Okay, I closed the public hearing, but there's no one here to speak.
Madam Chair, I've had the opportunity, as well as I think all of the board members, to visit the DSS Health Department, and it's in dire need for a new facility. It's long overdue. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item.
We have a motion on the floor.
Madam Chairman, number 19 and 20.
We'll do those two. We'll do what Mr. Williams is trying to do if we can wait until then.
Yes, 18 and 19.
So are you saying we need to wait until that comes up?
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Moving along back to special presentations, a motion to approve the 2023 April month of the Military Child. I think we have Heather Winstead to present this resolution.
Good morning. I'm Heather Winstead. I'm the Wayne County Public Schools Military Liaison, and with me is Kristi Barnes-Williams, Seymour Johnson, Air Force Base School Liaison.
Good morning.
Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving in our country's armed forces and active-duty posts around the world, and whereas nearly 2 million children have at least one parent currently serving active military duty, and whereas Wayne County Public Schools has nearly 2,000 military-connected students and nearly 13% of its population who are children of active duty, reserve, retired, or veteran, and...
Whereas the U.S. Department of Defense celebrates the month of the Military Child, further highlighting the important role of military children, that military children play in the armed forces community, and whereas the children of the service members are major contributors to the strength of their parents and make significant contributions to family, school, and community, and the state, and the nation, despite repeated and prolonged absences of one or both parents. And whereas parents serve in the military, their kids serve too, and it is a fitting for our community to pay tribute to military children of their commitment to their struggles and their unconditional support of our troops.
Now, therefore, you, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as the month of the Military Child and April 21st as Purple Up Day for Wayne County Public Schools. We encourage all school personnel and Wayne County residents to recognize the contributions of military families and to celebrate the spirit of military children across our district and nation by wearing purple on April 21st as an outward symbol of appreciation for our youngest heroes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation of April 2023, the month of the Military Child.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve 2023 April month of Military Child. You vote. There's no more discussion.
That motion passed. Moving on to item number four is a motion to approve the 2023 National Telecommunicators' Week proclamation. I ask Chris Barnes to come up at this moment to present this proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Carol and to the board for this opportunity to stand before you and for us to recognize National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Wayne County again. It's hard to believe it's been a year since we've done this. Been a tough year for us in 911, but I want to say that we are very honored and privileged to serve the citizens of Wayne County, and we are very proud for the role that we play in the 911 Center for protecting our citizens and the responders in the field. So without further ado, we'll read this proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Wayne County 911 Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first responders and the most critical contact our citizens have with the emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing their information or them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators of Wayne County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators' Week in Wayne County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve this resolution.
Any more discussion? I would have a motion on the floor to approve the 2023 National Telecommunication Week proclamation. Have you all heard?
Yeah, we've ordered.
I'll vote yes. All right, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty, moving on to item number five. It's a plaque presentation for retiring detention center employee Queen Red. I'll ask Sheriff Larry Pierce if he would like to come up and present.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'll ask Ms. Queen Red to join me, please. This is another happy but sad occasion too, because we're going to miss Ms. Queen. When Ms. Queen walked the hallways at the jail, she demanded respect, and she got it. We're still kind of scared of her, but... In the last few years, she has worked in inmate services, and she's provided the coordination of the inmates with their families, which during COVID was quite a feat, so she has done a great job, and we appreciate her service. At this time, we'll present this to you, Ms. Queen. Presented to Queen Red in recognition of service, dedication, and leadership to the Wayne County Detention Center, March 23, 1998; March 31, 2023; 25 years of excellence. Thank you, son.
Sheriff Pierce, when did you start her at 10 years old?
Ma'am.
When did you start her at 10 years old? She's still young to retire.
Okay, next item is a plaque presentation for retired sheriff's office employee Mel Powers.
Please join me up front.
A longtime county employee.
A longtime. Mel came to us in the last few years of his service to Wayne County, and I think he's going to continue to help us on a part-time basis. I will say that Mel was instrumental in developing a program for us to follow our domestic violence people as well as our sexual violence people, so I want to thank him personally for that, and he has got it up and running like a well-oiled machine. He is also one of our drone certified drone operators that kind of heads up that program, and one of our fire investigators, so I do need him back. So Mel, at this time, presented to Mel E. Powers Jr. in recognition and appreciation of your many years of faithful and dedicated service, November 10, 1997; May 1, 2023, Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
Sheriff, you forgot to talk about when we have our storms, how he's instrumental with helping with the storm.
Mel was very instrumental. He's been with Wayne County 30 years or 25 years, but he was in OES private criminal arrest. He was instrumental in keeping everything coordinated, your hurricanes, and so he's been here a long time doing a lot of good things for us.
Did you say Mel E. or Mel T.?
Thank you.
All righty, good stuff there. Madam Chair, it's time you should reassess the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. Richard Bean.
It's 9:30.
Is it 9:30? Okay. Well, we move ahead to unfinished business, the item number 10. Item 10 is to hold a second vote on the revisions to the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance and Stormwater Plan. On your first vote, it has to be unanimous. There was a missing member here, so we would need a revote on that. It'd be approved by a simple majority.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance and Stormwater Plan revisions.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. You can vote now. There's no more discussion. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
All right, moving on to the consent. We can move to consent. We went over that in our pre-agenda, and we need to vote on it.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the adjusted consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the adjusted consent agenda. Any more questions that we can vote? Thank you.
We might get 34 once now. Keep moving along.
Ready to do new business, Mr. Grandploir?
Yes, we'll move on to 18. It's a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, the new DSS health facility and the GMP contract amendment with TA 11, subject to approval by the county attorney. And is TA 11 here?
I can tell him to come here.
Okay.
I can do 19 and 20.
Go ahead. Let's move on to 19 and 20. TA 11 is not here quite yet. Will do the motion to approve a resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding an installment financing agreement to finance the cost of the construction of a new combined Department of Social Services and Health Department building for the county of Wayne, and a motion to approve a resolution number 20, a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an installment financing agreement, a deed of trust, a project fund agreement, a wire transfer agreement, and the related documents in connection with the financing of a new combined Department of Social Services and Health Department building for Wayne County.
And let me just say, I told TA 11 not to be here till at least 10 o'clock. I figured we wouldn't be this quickly, so they didn't show up. They're not here because I told them not to be here. So we can go ahead and move to 19 and 20. We already had our public hearing at 9 o'clock. If you recall from your borrowing that we've done for Fremont Elementary and the Detention Center, the local government commission makes us go through certain procedures in order to approve borrowing for projects. So we already called the public hearing. You passed that resolution last month. We've now had our public hearing, so there's two steps required, and that's what's on your agenda for today. The first step is to adopt preliminary findings by the board, and that means that you set an amount that you can borrow up to. You determine that there's a need to borrow that amount, and that's what that first resolution does. The second one actually approves, and let me back up for a second. You all have already approved Truist, the financing arrangement with Truist. You did that at your previous meeting for up to not exceed $40 million. So that's the lender that you have chosen right now. So the preliminary findings would authorize you to borrow up to that amount, and then the item number 20 would instruct staff, the county manager, the finance officer, and your borrowing attorneys to execute all the necessary documents to close on the loan. Usually, in the past, the last two borrowings, we've done these at separate meetings, but it turns out that we're ready to proceed on both of them, so we've joined them up in one meeting. So if you recall for Fremont and for Detention Center, we broke those up over two meetings, but we're just doing them combined today.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the installment financing agreement to finance the cost of construction of a new combined Department of Social Services and Health Department. Hey, you popped up on the thing here while I was reading that.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm reading it now. Subject to the approval of the county attorney. And next, a motion... Oh, I'm sorry, do it one at a time. So I make that motion.
Okay, any discussion on this before we vote?
Yes, I'd like to make a few comments. We're a long time getting to this point, and your comments are well stated. For 10 years on this board, we have seen the deplorable conditions at our Department of Health and Social Services, and there never seemed to be the right timing. Well, finally, we are here, and I am just so proud that we are at a point of approving the construction of this facility and the financing. I also want to point out that on the financing, we did have some good news from the federal government, which is stating that they're going to pay one-half of the interest on this construction, this financing. And that was some fantastic news that we got the other day. But any rate, I just want to make some comments on how proud I am of this day.
I am too, and I'd like to thank everybody that's worked on this project because we've done a lot of discussions and back and forth in trying to get this here, and we're finally here. Thank you, Commissioner Doctor.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to follow up on what Commissioner Doctor said. We've kept this can down the road ever since I've been on the board, and by the time we think we're in a position to do something, something more important would come up, but it's going to be a great asset to Wayne County because those two agencies right now, especially DSS, is strung out in buildings all over the county. And to consolidate it and get it, you know, get it all in one building, I just think that the flow of work and the productivity of the employees is going to pick up greatly.
All right.
And Madam Chair, if I may, real quick, I know this came up in the agenda briefing. You will see, and I don't want to steal TA 11's thunder, but they're going to present on your GMP. GMP came in approximately about $30 million. We are planning to borrow all the construction costs as well as the soft costs, so that's architect fees, FFNE contingency. So I believe that takes, and you all have that in front of you, I passed out that new budget, that takes it up to around $38 million. So I just, there's always a little bit of confusion. We put that $40 million mark. That doesn't mean that we're going to borrow that full amount. The LGC will only allow us to borrow what's actually we have bids in hand for. So we're going to borrow that amount that's in front of you right there. I just want to clarify that because there's always some, you know, confusion about construction costs and then what we are going to borrow, so.
Well, if I could pee back on that, there was some discussion earlier that we would try to use some fund balance to minimize that borrowing. However, if you got your partner, the federal government coming in and saying, hey, we're going to pay half your interest, we're going to go ahead and borrow the 38. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Everybody voted?
Okay, now I wanted to make my second motion. That's a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an installment financing agreement, a deed of trust, a project fund agreement, a wire transfer agreement, and related documents in connection with the financing of a new combined Department of Social Services and Health Department building for the county of Wayne, North Carolina.
A motion on the floor, any discussion? Okay, you may vote. No discussion. Passed, five to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Moving on, we'll try to get number 21 in now. It's a motion to approve $2 million to the Wayne Community College for the site building and an appropriate budget amendment. As we discussed earlier, their bids on the project came in over, and they are asking for an additional assurance of funds of $2 million, and they need that assurance. They're looking for that assurance so they can send that to the state.
Madam Chair. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the $2 million to Wayne Community College for site building and appropriate budget amendment.
And we are adding to that motion up to $2 million.
Up to $2 million, yes.
Face the bond if they have other funding sources.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
As I explained earlier, the project did come in over budget. The college has worked many, many hours on securing funds and going back over the project with the architect and contractor and have cut right much off of the figure. And basically, what this $2 million is, hopefully, we're not going to need, the college is not going to need it all, but Community College is kind of like our Board of Commissioners. We always have to get someone else's permission. They have to go before the state Community College Board, and what this is doing is basically guaranteeing the Community College and the Community College Board that if these funds are needed, that they're available. But hopefully, we're going to be able to cut some corners and maybe find some other funding sources, and... But this is where the goal of the Community College is to turn out students and have them equipped to go into the workforce and just because our companies that are hiring these students, the Community College is where they're relying on getting their employees. You know, a four-year degree is great, but with the changes in times and the necessity for skilled workers, the Community College, the burden is on them right now to reduce the workforce for Wayne County, the state, and this nation. And I'd just like to thank Derek and Mr. Jackson for being here today. That's all I have, man.
Thank you, Commissioner Doctor. This is an investment in our community. That's the way I look at this money. I mean, we're investing in the future of Wayne County, and I think Wayne County, Wayne Community College is part of this community and our investment in our students in this county. And have we voted?
I did. Well, we all did.
Everybody voted. Mr. Turner, would you like to say something?
Morning, Commissioners. Please allow me to deliver the regrets to Dr. Parker for not being able to be here today. As luck would have it, she's again bringing home the gold. If you'd be interested to note that the college, your college, has, after being the only nominee from the state of North Carolina, we have won a national award for American Association of Community Colleges for a college and corporate partnership based on our apprenticeship program with Smithfield Foods that is delivering very highly-trained industrial maintenance technicians. So she's busy with that this morning. She would love to be here. This project is very important to the county, to the region. We have very, very appropriately dug in, as Mr. Acock mentioned. We've gone in, we've done all of our value engineering upfront. That's why we chose the delivery method that we did to allow us to engage with that contractor and architect together and put that value engineering function in early on in the project. And we've done a lot. Our faculty has been very reasonable in their request and what they need. And what we have designed and what we are planning to deliver is a building that is very appropriate for the needs of the county and the region to supply workforce and workforce growth in the areas of the industrial manufacturing arena as well as getting into the construction trades arenas. We appreciate your support this morning. We can, I could talk basically all day, but in the sake of your time, I'll just ask if you have any questions. you have any questions specifically for us, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to recess, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, leave it up.
Have we voted? Voted.
Okay.
Motion carried.
In unanimous.
Yes.
All right, it sounds good. Thank you. Moving on now, Madam Chair, you need to reconvene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments.
All right, we will recess the Wayne County Commissioner meeting at nine-thirty, and we will reconvene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments.
Madam Chair, you continued the public hearing last time until this date for both, both projects. The people who have already spoken do not need to get up and say the same thing they've spoken before. You had asked attorneys to talk to some of the people who had some concerns, and I think it would be appropriate now for them to report to you what they've been able to do.
Okay. All right, do we, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm Tom Terrell. I represent Sasser Solar. We're glad to be back here this morning. Let me just tell you, so that you know who's here to answer your questions this morning. Mr. James Bedrin will speak after me. He's gonna give you the report of what you asked us to bring back to you. But also here to answer questions are Mr. John Pike and Jim Lynch, who are here from Maxwell Foods. I think all of you know the company or them individually. You may have questions about the site plan. Mr. Paul Powell is with Kimley Horn, and Mr. Austin Rowland is here. He is a landscape architect. We have already presented you evidence that we've met all of our standards. I'm gonna ask Mr. Bedrin to explain to you who we met with. He actually came into North Carolina to meet with one particular neighbor. Could you, let's hand this out to the board. I think this visual will explain a lot. What is it? Yes, let me get one back. Can you get one? Did you just take that?
That's the one?
Yes. And can I get your name, please?
Yeah, it's James Bedrin.
James?
Bedrin, B-E-D-R-I-N.
And is there a Bible up there?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is James Bedrin. I'm the Project Development Manager with Birch Creek Energy, representing Sasser Solar. So I was here last month, but I didn't actually speak. I let our consultants and experts speak on behalf of the project, so, but I'm the Project Development Manager for, for Sasser Solar. So last week, we had some folks come out, including Goldsboro Milling, to actually meet with the landowners that had expressed some concerns last month at the public hearing. So we came out and met them in person, and that's why you have this updated site plan in front of you. So the first landowner that we met with was Mr. Grady. If you recall, he had made some concerns about the buffering that we had initially offered. So we went out, and what that came out to is we were able to double the existing vegetative buffer along the east side of his property from a hundred feet to two-hundred feet. So we did increase that and implemented that in the site plan that you have in front of you. He expressed that he was happy with that, with that extra buffering there. And just to reiterate, this is existing vegetative buffer, so the benefit of that is that it already exists. It's already fully grown. It's not gonna take a year, five years to, to take some time to grow. All right, so the next landowner that we met with, Mr. Kearney, we also agreed to implement some stronger existing vegetative buffers. So you'll see that highlighted green area along Bradhurst Road. We increased that from fifty feet to a hundred feet. And then we also increased the southern end of this parcel to fifty feet of existing vegetative buffer. Yeah, once again, that's existing vegetative buffer for both of those landscape buffers, so, you know, again, that'll be already in place. Then the last thing that we had agreed to was to move.
Where's that at? Where's that at?
Where's that located at?
Where?
Yeah, yeah, so Bradhurst, you see this?
Sorry, I'm speaking ancient North Carolina language. Where is that at?
Yeah, yeah. So if you, if you look at the site plan right in front of you, this kind of highlighted green area right here, you'll see that's a one-hundred-foot vegetative buffer, and then there should also be a label there. So there's an arrow that'll point it out. But that entire length of Bradhurst Road is where we've offered to increase the vegetative buffer. All right, and so the last update that I have is we also agreed to reduce the site access. So Gurley Lane, which you'll see cuts through the project right here where Bradhurst meets Gurley, we agreed to, you know, for operations, to move some of the vehicle traffic to a more high-traffic area off of Greenfield Cemetery Road, so that, you know, residents there don't see an increased traffic. So those were the discussions that we had with the landowners. Happy to answer any other questions. And we've also got someone from Kimley Horn to dig into a little bit more of the site plan, details if needed.
I want to thank y'all for doing this. You know, that means a whole lot, taking your time and working with the people there and everything, the due to extra. We really appreciate that.
If I could just clarify two points. I think Mr. Parker would want me to say that these are offered as conditions on the site plan. Mr. Grady, I think, would like to hear us say this would be binding, we offer it as such. And also, when Mr. Bedrin said, we're doubling the buffer, it was already four times what the county requires. We doubled it, so it's now eight times what the county requires.
Which one, or just Mr. Grady's, right?
That, yes, that's correct.
And Kearney's is what?
It would be fifty feet.
So Kearney's is a hundred feet.
That's four times.
Four times, yeah.
Is there a reason there's a difference?
It has a quality of a difference.
So, you know, the difference is that, first of all, you know, Grady requested two-hundred feet, and it was something that we were happy to provide for him. And then another thing that I would say is that, one thing with increasing vegetative buffers is that we also have to keep in back, in mind the production head to, you know, our system. So on the southern end here, there's a little bit more flexibility on how far we can keep a vegetative buffer over something that's on the eastern end.
So is it natural, is it basically trees now?
Yep, so it's existing buffer, so.
On both?
On both, yep, on both spots. So, you know, one thing that you'll see frequently with solar farms is, you know, there might be some plantings. This avoids that because it'll, it's in existence already, so it's already mature.
Can you elaborate a little bit pertaining to, I know that the Maxwells were willing to give one of the homeowners access to their properties, come in and out. Was there any additional information pertaining to that?
I know that, Jim, Jim spoke with the individual that came last month. I believe they, they discussed, unfortunately, I don't have, I know that she will still have that access. That's about as much information I have, but happy to have someone else come up and give more details.
That was off Greenfield Cemetery, right, right?
No. Can you explain a little bit, sir?
Well, he's coming up. There's nothing that this project is doing to change what already has existed.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do indeed. I think you're, Commissioner Williams, you're talking about Belle Chandler. She had a question about the access she uses to her home. I believe we answered that question here when we said that that road had to be maintained open so that we could reach our hog farm that's at the back. She was, I believe she was under the assumption that the solar farm would take her driveway in, when in fact, our plans never were to close that road, it's gonna be open. So those were the three comments, the three neighbors who spoke last time, Mr. Kearney, Mr. Grady, and Mrs. Chandler. I think we've addressed each of those concerns. Ms. Chandler, though, hers, I believe, were addressed without the need to go back to her between the time between last month's meeting and this one.
Okay, I just wanted to have some clarity, make sure that we talked to everyone, everyone was happy.
If that's the case, thank you.
I think, I think the misconception, I mean, I've, I've had several calls, and I think the misconception.
My name's Larry Grady.
Sir, have you been sworn in?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And your name is, were you sworn in last time?
So was you.
Okay, then yours. Larry Grady, is that correct? Thank you, sir.
I just want to be brief. Mr. Mike come out to my home and saw my situation, and we come to an agreement, and I'm satisfied with it. They, they're real good, I appreciate it. And I let, let Mr. Mike know, I appreciate it, because years ago, he said we'd be good neighbors, and I consider what they did as good neighbors, so I'm happy with it myself. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
I think the misconception on some of our solar farm facilities that we have in the county, you ride around, you see some with landscaping, some with not, there's different jurisdictions that, or solar farms in other jurisdictions than just Wayne County, like the city of Goldsboro, Mount Olive, Long Creek, those things. So they actually have their own criteria. That's the reason that you don't see, in some instances, landscaping around some of them. I do think that as a whole, as a county, that we need to look into having the same setbacks on all residential issues, residential properties, the same type of landscape, so everything is, everything is the same. It's, when people ride around, they don't see something different. Under the last two, this one and the one before, is in the county's jurisdiction, and we are requiring, in our ordinance, I guess you'd call it, a landscape buffer. And something that needs to be maintained to, to eliminate what some may feel is an unsightly facility. So I just think, just, I want to clear that up, because there has been some conversation about, there's different things, and I think we need to, we need, as a county, Madam Chair, I think we need to look into trying to work with the other municipalities or with ETJs that they can, we can all be on the same playing field, so there's no misconception and things to come. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair? I'm sorry.
Make sure, did any, any of the homeowners have anything else to say?
Yes. Yes. Is your name on the list?
Yes, Melanie Jenkins.
Okay, and I'll need to give you the oath, please.
Sure.
So left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
And are you wishing?
Yes.
Did you sign up as well?
Rebecca Floyd on the list.
Okay, and if you'll do the same, do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I was not able to be here at the last meeting, I was at a conference, so unfortunately, I wasn't able to speak, but I do want to share today some feelings and thoughts that I have. So thank you, Madam Chair and gentlemen, for your time, for our county, and for your consideration of what I have to say today. I am not a public speaker, so I made a couple notes in the car before I walked in, but I am a parent, and as a parent, I have always encouraged my children to be courageous. We're convicted. So here I stand, practicing what I've preached through the years. Our children watch us, how we move in life, and they take note on how we behave. So here I stand, pleading my case for the love of the land that has been in my family for over a hundred years, that I have personally witnessed five generations in joy in my fifty-one years of life. My guess is that each of you in this room has experienced the sad news of a loved one being given a terminal ill diagnosis. I'm sure you can all remember the sucker punch feel that you experienced when you heard that news. It's awful. It's nothing that I wish on anyone. And this is the closest illustration to describe what my family and I have been experiencing since receiving the letter of the solar farm proposal in the mail a few months back. It's called anticipatory grief. There are stages of grief. The stages aren't linear, so you don't go through one check, you're done. It's a roller coaster ride that you can't get off of and you want to. You go back and forth with the emotional rawness. The first stage is shock and disbelief, like, is this really happening? You know? You want to think that it's not. Soon after that is the stage of anger and frustration of why. I mean, I get it, it's business, but we're just simple people trying to live a good life. Next stage is the bargaining stage, where you come together to negotiate. It's a bit of false hope, which leads you to the next stage of sadness and depression, henceforth why I'm emotional as I stand before you today, because that's what's really consumed me recently. You feel defeated, and you feel as if there's no hope, that your opinions, your feelings, the value of your land means nothing. And this keeps many people from speaking up. There's just a handful of us, because it's hard to be courageous and to stand before your commissioners to ask to be heard. I would have never dreamed that I would have been here for any reason ever, but here I stand. So that's just a simple summary and a bird's eye view of the emotional rawness that my family has been experiencing. And a few more highlights. I have a sixteen-year-old son, I have, I have a lot of children, I got five, to be exact, that I've raised on this land. And it don't all have my name on it, but it's my family land that my mother has shared, and my brothers, in the joy of us experiencing this land together. And my sixteen-year-old son is on spring break this week, and he forfeited a cruise to the Caribbean to be in the woods to turkey hunt because it's youth season, if you didn't know. Opening day was Monday, every opening day, since the time he was a tiny tot, and not just him, but my other three boys and my two daughters. He called me on my way here, said, Mom, have you been, have you spoke? Said, not yet, son, but I will, because you matter to me, and I want my children to always know they matter to me. So he's soaking up every moment that he has left, because he fears that his days are numbered, because the wildlife will be gone. That's ultimately, I don't have any raw data of what's not good about this, I just simply know that it's not good for my family, because in these woods, many relationships have been fostered and grown. My husband wasn't a hunter when he married me, neither am I, but he has spent years in a stand, in a blind building, relation, you know, fostering. relation, you know, fostering, you know, something mighty special, because of the love he has for his children. He's fostered relationships and built a connection, and as parents, we have influence in our children when we have connection. So the value of this land and what it has produced for my family, it's priceless. This is where my children have experienced the true beauty of God's creation and have grown in awe of something so much bigger than them. Is that not valuable? So I beg each of you to see more than just a booming business project. I get it. I understand business is happening, but I also need to stand before you to be heard that my land and my family, and we're going through some tough times as a society and a world, and if we can't find places to connect with our children and foster goodness, and if it's in the land, on the land, what better place? So I thank you for your time and for your consideration of the concerns of my heart and my children's and the future children. My 16-year-old, invited.
Time's up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Are you here pertaining to Sasser Solar or Stevens Mill Solar?
Sasser Solar, my own property on Broadhurst Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I probably should not have followed behind my aunt, but good morning and thank you for your time. My name is Rebecca Floyd, and I was unable to be at the original public hearing due to being at my husband's side as he healed from a traumatic brain injury. I wanted to make a statement today on behalf of my family. I currently live on Broadhurst Road in Seven Springs. I lived on Broadhurst Road for the first 21 years of my life until I married a firefighter in Lenore County and moved there to make it my home in 2021. Just before the pandemic started, I reached out to my 80-year-old grandmother and expressed interest in buying part of the land and the 100-year-old farmhouse that my great-great-granddaddy built. I knew where my roots were and where I wanted to raise my five children. Yesterday, I actually made three years since we purchased the property and started the process of restoring the home and making it our forever home. Fast forward to this past winter, when I was rocking my sweet sixth baby on my little hillside, and my husband handed me a letter out of the mailbox that detailed these plans. That letter quickly became tear-stained as I read what was to become of the beautiful wooded area that surrounded my home, my grandmother's home, my parents' home, and many others that are my neighbors. I've heard the term "we want to be good neighbors" all throughout this project. It took on a new meaning on February 27th, when I received the phone call that my firefighter husband had been injured after a fall from a fire truck and was being prepped to be airlifted to ECU Health in Greenville. I drove to the hospital wondering if my six children would have a daddy to return home to them. That is when I began the journey of watching my neighbors be good neighbors. They were the ones that stepped up for my family. They are the ones that delivered the meals, fed the animals, prayed for us, helped with the children, and anything else to lighten the burden for us. They are the people who have grown up in the Indian Springs community and have worked hard for the things they have. They are the ones that have purchased fundraising tickets for my kids over the years and have been at the graveside of our loved ones that have passed away. I have found peace in my heart that I will most likely never be able to stop this project. The solar panels are quiet, but they are definitely not the same as looking at the God-given nature that I've currently been able to see out my back door. I hate that my sweet five-month-old daughter will never know what the land around our neighborhood once looked like, but what I do pray is that those who are going to move forward with these plans will honor their statement to be good neighbors. Without kind, considerate people, Wayne County will not be the place that pulled me back here to raise my six children that I pray will one day make this county their home. I hope they will grow up still being able to see forests full of trees, fields being prepped for planting, and everything that is lovely about calling Wayne County home. I'm thankful that after meeting with the representatives of the landowner and the solar company, that they're willing to give us a larger barrier than what was on their original map, and that they will move access points off of Gurley Lane, which runs through our property. We also mentioned that our property is right next to the floodplain, and that we want to have access to the studies that are done to make sure the timber being cleared is not going to cause us flooding or erosion issues on our property. The area is very sandy, and we have seen the way that heavy rain can affect the property around us. I do think these considerations are steps towards being good neighbors, and I pray that will continue. I do ask that as commissioners, that you will consider the amount of these solar farms that are being placed all over Wayne County. I had the honor to travel 6,700 miles across our nation in 2021 for a family vacation. We drove these miles over the course of 17 days. I saw some of the most beautiful scenic views I've ever seen. This gave our kids the opportunity to see huge wind turbines. We understand that we are an advancing society and that we will see things change over time. We came home and made the statement that out of all the places and things we saw, that we know in our hearts that we are blessed to live in one of the most beautiful areas in our nation.
Your time is up, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you show me on a map where Gurley Lane, where their properties could be at, possibly?
So, where Gurley Lane is?
I think that's where you said you guys at.
Yes, Gurley Lane owns the property, and they originally had an access point on Gurley Lane, and they agreed that that road is not a, or a road that's able to be used for the kind of traffic. So they said they would move it to another access point.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Yes, so that was one of the points I had mentioned. So Gurley, Broadhurst runs north-south, and then so it meets Gurley Lane. It's up here in the northeast corner of the project. We had initially had a construction access point up there, and upon meeting with the neighbors had agreed to move it to a more high-traffic area, most likely along Greenfield Cemetery Road.
Yeah, I wish that, I wish that the ladies could have been here the last meeting, because I think that this company is really willing to be good neighbors. I don't know today if, you know, us holding it off would be conducive to, you know, I wish you would have been here sooner. That's what I'm trying to say. I don't know if they can talk to you before, before this board decides to make a decision on this. I don't know if you'd be willing to take five minutes, 10 minutes, to talk with these ladies and see if there is something that could be done.
Commissioner, we'll be glad to take five minutes. If it takes 10, we'll be glad to step out. I think there was a pre-meeting discussion already.
Yeah, so as mentioned, we did, some of these changes have been made, yeah, like the, yeah, yeah, sorry. So some of these changes had already been made, like the access point change and the additional screening, but we're, again, we're happy to have some further discussions.
Is that okay with the board?
The board has taken in consideration that, and they're fine with it.
Thank you.
Just recess the public hearing if they go outside.
All right, I recess the public hearing at the moment, until five minutes, please.
Are we in recess?
The public hearing is, has been recessed in this particular thing. If you want to call, open the other public hearing.
Do we need to open public hearing for this one, or?
You would need to open the public hearing for the second.
Number nine?
Stevens Mill Solar Energy Facility. Reconvene the Board of Adjustments Public Hearing to receive public comment on special use permit for Stevens Mill Solar Energy Facility. Board may choose to take action following the public hearing.
All right, we were reconvening for the Stevens Mill Solar. We need to swear in or anything?
You, sir, were, I can't.
I was here. I'm Colin Tarrant. I'm the attorney for Stevens Mill Solar. I believe everyone who's here, except for Harrison, will need to be sworn in, and so when he gets up to speak, he can be sworn in. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Colin Tarrant. I'm an attorney with Blackcraft and Keeter in Wilmington. I'm here on behalf of Stevens Mill Solar. Again, you've heard from us before, last month, there were affidavits that were entered into the record, as well as previous testimony during the public hearing. Those affidavits were from our experts, Chris Sandifer, who is here, he is our engineer, Nick Kirkland, who is also here, I think he may have stepped out, but he is our appraiser, and you've heard testimony from them previously. Also here today is Harrison Cole. Harrison is a representative of Cypress Creek Renewables, and Stevens Mill Solar, who is the applicant. We did, this matter was continued from last month, to give us an opportunity to address some of the concerns that were raised by some of the neighboring property owners during the public hearing in March. We've taken that opportunity to meet with those folks. I'm going to invite Mr. Cole to come up and give you a little bit more background on the efforts that were made to address some of those concerns, if I may.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Harrison Cole. I live in Asheville, North Carolina. I'm a North Carolina native. I grew up in Greensboro with my family and attended NC State, and now live in the beautiful mountains of North Carolina. I apologize for my absence last time. We had a company outing, and I was unable to make it, but you met my colleague, Ben Manuel, who helped cover for me, which I was very appreciative of. So I'm sure he gave you some background about Cypress Creek and all that, all that information, but I just wanted to let you know that I've worked with Wayne County and specifically Goldsboro in the past with Mr. Bill Lane to develop some solar farms, especially off of Old Smithfield Road, only on the south side, though. The north one is a separate one. But I just wanted to say that I hear all of your concerns about a vegetative buffer. I drove by that farm yesterday. Not only is the vegetative buffer growing on the front, it's, and I'll admit, it's a little bit thin, but we do have those slats going through the fence as well that help to cover up the project in all, in our regards. So I just want to say that, you know, I've enjoyed working with Wayne County and Goldsboro in the past and hope to continue to do so. And the other thing I wanted to mention, excuse me, is that we have our own O N department that's based in Durham, North Carolina. So this is a 24/7, 365-man facility, where we have a technician that's always available at any time of the day, even on Christmas Day. And so we have a sign on the outside of all of our facilities that they connect to a real person sitting in Durham right away. So if that's anything that you can call us and say, hey, the shrub is looking dead, we can come out there and look at it and replace it if needed. It's also, you know, if there's, God forbid, a vehicle accident and it goes into the fence, you know, we have the ability to turn off these facilities directly from Durham and make sure that we can commission them again in a safe manner. And we can, you know, from here to Durham, it's only about an hour, and so we have technicians all across the eastern part of the state, because we've developed over 100 projects in North Carolina. We've been here since 2014 and, you know, really take pride in being a good neighbor here. We've worked with BetaBox, who they might have mentioned last time, but we brought a field trip to students in Wayne County, over 400 students, and they learned about computer engineering. And we're also looking to expand in scholarship operations and everything like that starting this year. And so we're really excited to, you know, continue to work with Wayne County. Specifically about this project, just for some background, we held a open, we like to call it an open house, where I send a mailer out to all individuals that live adjacent to the project area. We did that even before the project was submitted to the staff, and we allowed Mr. Kuhn to come, his wife, and his son, Gene Kuhn. So I've been in, trying to be in constant contact with them since the last public hearing, and have called them numerous times, and I've not got an answer back from them. So I'm trying my best and promise I will continue to try and talk to them, but we were able to give them a lot of good information and pamphlets in the first meeting that we had, the open house. Secondly, I went to go visit Mr. Womble, who lives along Stevens Mill Lane, and sat on his porch with him for about two hours. And we just talked about solar, talked about life, all this kind of stuff, you know. I'm from relatively nearby, and, you know, I understand, you know, the Goldsboro and the surrounding culture around here. So we had a great discussion, and after that, we agreed that we would be willing to increase the setbacks along him and his son's property line, because they live right beside each other. And so that'll be on one side of the property line, and then the back side as well. There's a 100-foot buffer already off any residence, and so we're going to do, and then there's also the setbacks off the property line, which we're going to increase to 75 feet. So, and that includes the vegetative buffer as well. I showed them some pictures of that, and they seemed pretty content with that. So we had a good discussion then, and yeah, we're just here to, you know, continue to be good neighbors, and I waited for Mr. Autry, because he lives beside Mr. Womble, and was not able to connect with him, unfortunately. But I told Mr. Womble to give him my business card, and we'll keep on talking and make sure that we can, we can get everything addressed, but that increased setback in vegetative buffer on that side will also, will also help his land as well. Last thing I'll mention that we did talk about was with Mr. Womble's son. We originally had a driveway that was closer to his house, kind of along the curb on Stevens Mill Road, and they were telling me about all the accidents that come through and mess up their mailboxes, unfortunately. So we haven't worked with the DOT yet, but we're already going to push that driveway way down the road to where it's more straight. That way, there's no, there's hopefully no incidents. So with that, yeah, that's all I have.
Any questions?
I got one question. I don't know if you can answer this. The connector between the two projects, it goes across, I think, two or three different people's property. Is that, is that a, is that a right of way that do, would take, or is that a right of way that goes with the, with the project?
That would go with the project specifically?
So you've got to have, you've got to have consent between, from the landowners to go across their property?
Yes, sir, and that's why in the site plan, it says proposed, because it's not, it's not done yet, but yes, we are continuing to talk to them. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I did have a question on Mary. Mary, are these changes reflected on his proposed map now?
We would enter them as conditions of approval.
I have not seen the map at this point.
So you haven't seen that?
Not yet.
We have not, yeah, because I was talking with Mr. Womble yesterday, because he did not give us his contact information, so I just went to go call knock, and it was the, I missed him the first time a couple weeks ago, and then was able to finally get up with him yesterday. But we're happy to submit that as a condition of approval for the updated site plan with everything we talked about.
Any more questions?
Is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak on this matter?
I'm calling the Gray Autry.
The one spoken to.
Of which meeting, just to clarify, sorry.
They will need to come up to the podium. We can't hear them. All right, your names, last names are Autry?
Yes.
Were you sworn in at the last meeting?
Yes, I was.
Okay, were you, ma'am?
Yes, I was. My name is Mary Alfaro. I live at 1970 Stevens Mill Road. This is my father.
Okay. I'll get your names in a moment. I'll let you go ahead and speak.
We, all this that this guy talked about is new to us. We ain't been asked nothing. And we was late the first time we received any word about any meetings. We were late in getting that. So I don't know what's coming off here. It seem like it's for some, it's one way, and for the others, it's something else. And second of all, the land use of the solar panels can hurt the environment. It also can hurt people living close to them. And they say, oh, they don't call no pollution. They cause pollution from the time that they're being manufactured. And that... And when they, at the end of the 20 years that they're there, what happens? Can you come back there and put some more panels up there and keep it solar farm? Nobody has never even mentioned that. They've mentioned that 20 years is no good. If somebody get rid of it. But nobody has said, oh, is this a one-time use? When you destroy that land, you go on and build some more and destroy it? Pretty soon, you will run out of land to live on, to grow food on, to do whatever on. And they already say that you can't use that land for nothing. Once they're through.
Say that again. What'd you just say? You said an audit says you can't use the land for something?
You can't use the land for anything.
After you use it for solar panels, once the panels are removed, you can't use the land to farm on anymore after that.
Who determined that?
Do you have documentation of some sort?
I got it off the computer.
I was just going to say, we have an expert witness here who's a professional engineer and has a solar farm on his own farmland that is happy to speak to the tech...
And it cause pollution. They are harmful stuff put into the panels. I think from the last time they said, oh, just a little bit. Well, how many little bits does it take to go into thousands of panels that will make up to a large bit? And so, I mean, what the computer says and what these people are saying does not jive no way, nohow. And when the... I mean, the thing about is, once the land, you can't use it anymore. I don't believe they're manufacturing in the land anymore. They might be going to farm the moon or something, but not here on the earth. I know it's favorite things, solar panels, that's it. Government, everything is behind it because we got to have energy. And they're looking all different energies from fossil fuel. Well, if one is going to kill you, what difference does it make which one? If it's going to harm the environment, harm the world that you own, what difference does it make which one of it is running it? It's just boils down to the going fashion of the debt.
Sir, your time is up. I'm sorry. I need to get both of your names. Are you planning on speaking as well, ma'am?
Just for a minute, if you don't mind. My name is Mary Alfaro. He is my father. I live at 1970 Stevens Mill Road. I do have two children. One is special needs and my youngest has health risks, health issues as well. So couldn't know the solar farms, they do concern me as far as health. You know, I try to stand up for my children and teach them what's right and what's wrong. I'm all for protecting the environment. I recycle. My children try to do the best they can. I am a Girl Scout leader. My Girl Scouts love coming out to that area and spending the night and camping out and seeing the wildlife and everything. And I know once the solar panels put in, all that's going to be gone. And they're not going to get that enjoyment out of it any longer. Think that's about it.
Sir, ma'am, so were you against, if they were willing to give you some barriers, were you against that?
It would be something to think about.
Yeah.
But therefore, we ain't been given anything to think about, but it's a coming.
Well, I'd like to suggest the same thing that I suggested with the previous individuals. If you guys could take a moment of your time, step outside and see if you could have a meeting of the minds.
Yes, we're more than happy to step outside.
Recession to Stevens Mill Solar Farm Facility meeting. Five minutes, please. Do we need to reconvene the next one?
Let's go back to Sasser.
All right, we will reconvene to Sasser Energy Facility.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Manicant Tom Charo. We stepped outside. I think we took a little bit more than five minutes, but sometimes conversations take what they take. I want to, we have agreed to some things and I want to make this very clear for the public record and also for Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Floyd, who stepped out with us. There is, on your site plan, along Broadhurst Road, and I'm pointing to it on the map, but it is the only dark green line that has an engineer's note that says 100-foot preserved existing vegetative buffer. Basically, we took, I think it was Mr. Williams' question earlier, we took that as the basis of what we have offered to do. And we will now, and so that the record is clear, this will become a 200-foot buffer. I think it is important to note that this is 1,200 feet linear feet, not 200 linear feet. So it's a cost. But the company is willing to do that. I'm not sure that we said it earlier, but there is an access that we moved from Curly Lane. I want to make sure that that is there. We also offered to the neighbors, and we also, and we offered this to Mr. Grady as well, that there will be some high-visibility flags placed on the site so that there is not an accidental or inadvertent clearing of the land that has been reserved as existing vegetative buffer. I think that is important to say. And then the last issue is not something that would become a condition. There was, we had other neighbors stepped out to ask us about the continued use of what I will call an informal pathway to get to their property. It is not protected by title. It's not protected by easement. And because this would be an encroachment that has title and easement implications, we can't fix this right now. This, there is, to explain, is a lot of financing that's already in place for something like this. It would involve conversations with larders in other states for that. But we have promised, and I want you to know that we have promised, that we will continue in our discussions to see what can be done. And if that path can't be protected, we'll see if there might be something else. But we will continue to have good faith conversations.
Madam Chair? So are you ladies happy with the conversation and what they're willing to do? Yes? No?
That's a hard question. That's a loaded question. I mean, this is the negotiation. The one where my heart lies is nothing's going, I mean, this isn't the answer, but it's better than...
Got you. Thank you. Madam Chair, I want to make the motion.
You ladies closed the...
All right, we closed the Sasser's. All right. Public hearing? Can we vote now?
Madam Chair?
I'd like to say one word. Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Floyd, I'm like you, my heart is with land. And I think a lot of ones on the board. But we have to move along with this because they have met all the requirements that need to be met. But do understand, especially from me, I understand your feeling for the land because I own farmland too and I get out and do the same thing. So please know that and everything.
I need to say something.
Yes.
I've had a business relationship with the Maxxas for probably 25 to 30 years. And I just want to tell you thank you.
Yes, thank you too.
They're a good family and they... Their horse is in the right place.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I'd like to follow up on what Mr. Curly said. Curly, in my trucking career, I used to haul for them when they were on Sunner Street. So that tells you about how old I am. But they always did what they said they would do.
And one more thing, I got drilled by my 15-year-old daughter this morning at 5:30 about this facility.
I'll just say real quick, I don't... I mean, I understand them meeting the requirements and everything, but I don't understand why as a, we were put here, voted, put here by the community, that you said that we have to approve it. I don't know the legality of that, you know what I'm saying? That would be something the lawyer would have to speak on. But I'm always for change and improvement. But at the end of the day, I don't see how solar farms are improving anything. It's going to speak factual, you know what I'm saying? They're not driving our energy costs down. We're still paying the same bills, if not higher. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't know if the land will be contaminated and can't be used for years for farming, even though we're supposed to be a farming community. Same with wildlife, you know? I just had a friend recently call me having issues in her backyard because recently they tore down some woods and put up some new housing development behind her house and she's getting snakes and everything's coming in her yard now. She has a four-year-old daughter, you know? And it's like, you know, these things will continue to happen. I understand that we're supposed to grow, but, you know, also growing in the right way. You know, I just don't think, at this point, we have enough information on solar farms. I don't think they're beneficial only to the person that's putting a solar farm there that's making money and due energy. It's just of no benefit to anyone around it. I don't see any benefit, you know? Just from studies or whatever, you can say, well, you can pull information off the internet or wherever, but no different than any of these engineers have any more information than anybody off the internet has. The information sounds no different to me. You know, I've sat here and listened to every last one of them at the end of the day. They can't guarantee anything. They can't guarantee the land is going to be safe. They can't guarantee that wildlife is not going to leave. They're not worried about any of those things because once those solar farms are gone, they don't care. It's about making money and profit right now. And at the end of the day, it's bigger than that. When it comes down to citizens that we need to be protecting, and that's why we were put here by our citizens, not by large corporations, not by people with a lot of money in this county or anything like that. So, you know, I feel and I know the way this board is already going with it. I've been sitting with this board long enough. I know the decision was made before we even got to this meeting. And that's the sad part. But I'm definitely going to vote no on this because it's bigger than just some profit or it's bigger than just someone that we know well in the community. And not saying they haven't done great business. That's great. I'm glad the Maxxas has done great business, but at the same time, it's bigger than business on this.
Madam Clerk? Maybe Mr. Parker needs to explain what the duties of the Board of Commissioners are in issues like this. You know, they... What a lot of the public doesn't understand is, a lot of decisions that we sit up here and make are mandated by general statutes and from the state and the federal government. Mr. Parker, can you kind of explain what our duties are as an elected board?
Well, as the Board of Adjustment, you listen to the facts that have been presented to you and make a determination as to what those facts are and then vote based on what you think ought to be done. And clearly, if Commissioner Foster doesn't think that enough has been presented, he's certainly got the right to vote no. But if anybody else thinks enough facts have been presented, you've got the, if a motion is made, you've got the ability to vote yes.
Thank you, sir.
So let me ask you a question on the ordinance, on the solar facility ordinance or plan or whatever this is. Unless it's in, if it's not in the Seymour Johnson flight line or approach, it doesn't come before us. Is that correct or not? Is that correct? Next thing is, is if the company that is presenting the proposed solar facility, if they meet all the criteria, criteria that's based on the ordinance, have we got any... I mean, basically, if they, if they use the criteria, if they present all the criteria, then have we got any recourse?
Well, as I just said, if they, they've got to present facts to you.
Right.
To make findings of fact. If you believe what they have told you is true, you're acting like a jury.
Right. I got you.
I mean, so even with all that being said, at the end of the day, I mean, it boils down to a choice, you know what I mean? And it's fine, you know what I mean? But we can't make excuses of why we do something because if we just have to follow this simple rule of them presenting information and we having to accept it because it meets certain requirements, then why do we even waste the time, the public's time, even coming here talking or even sharing their concerns? So, I mean, at the end of the day, like I said, once again, it is what it is. But, you know, you have the right to vote how you vote. I have the right to vote how I vote. But we can continue on with the motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before I make this motion, I just want to say I really took a lot of thought in regard to my decision. And as you can tell, I always consider everyone involved. With that said, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the special use permit for Sasser Solar Energy Facility.
And you included that with the conditions that have been presented as well as those from the base?
With the conditions that have been included with the base and the changes with the residents and the perimeters that this facility is going to be located.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion before we vote? Okay. Has five to one.
Let's get it.
All right.
We move back to the Stevens Mill Solar Energy Facility.
Okay. We will now reconvene with the Stevens Mill Solar Energy. Where are they all good?
They're still outside, I think. I think they're still outside.
They're still talking.
There they come.
Okay, who would like to speak? We've reconvened.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did Stevens Mill Solar. We did meet with Mr. Autry and his daughter to discuss some of the concerns that were raised during his testimony. Specifically, we've agreed to extend the buffering and the setbacks for Mrs. Autry's property, which was down in the same area as previously discussed for Mr. Womble. And we will extend that to their property as well. And that also includes the fence sliding to make sure that we provide the greatest, to the greatest extent possible, a setback and a buffer that provides them with more room and separation from the project. We also did discuss some of their concerns and questions regarding the health and safety issues that were raised. We understand that, you know, there's not necessarily a consensus at this point, but we've provided them with some information. We've addressed some of their concerns specifically and we let them know that as they continue to look through some of the materials that we've provided them, that we're open to having a continuing dialogue to address any of their questions or concerns moving forward. moving forward. So I think, you know, at this point, unless Mr. Autry disagrees, you know, we've, we've kind of at least reached a point where, um, we've talked about some of those issues and gotten to a place where we can, I believe, move forward.
What size buffer are you speaking of now?
Mr. Col, we'll talk specifically about the buffer.
Yeah, so we, the, the buffer and se- additional setback that, uh, that Colin mentioned, that was already going to be included for Mr., uh, for the Wumble property and the Autry property, but we're also going to be having the two rows of evergreens, um, that meet the Wayne County ordinance, um, that, that meet the Wayne County ordinance for solar farms. So we'll have that, but then we'll also have the green slats that go in between. And, you know, as part of the, um, as part of the Wayne County Solar Ordinance, if you have those green slats, you can actually decrease your setbacks to the property line. We're not doing that. We're actually increasing. So you'll have the vegetative buffer and the green slats that'll be alongside that corridor where the houses are, are at, that, uh, Mr. Wumble and Miss, uh, Mr. and Miss Autry who lives at.
And the size of that vegetative buffer is?
Starts at four feet and then it, um, at, at planting, and then, you know, we just let it continue to grow. Um, out, obviously, the first six to 12 months is the most important, and that's why having our own, uh, O and M team in Durham is really, is really beneficial because we-
You know, the width of it, the size of it.
The di- oh, the width of it?
Yeah.
Of the individual tree?
No, the width of the actual landfill, ten foot, the buffer.
Yeah, the buffer, um, that, it's, uh, 25 feet.
25?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it's several layers of shrub, you're doing?
It'll, it'll meet the Wayne County requirements and the ordinance for solar farms.
And so you'll have the 25 and the slats?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just needed to get that on the record because if we-
As a condition of approval.
We need to make sure that that's adhered to.
Yes, sir, of course.
One comment I'd like to make, also, you know, things like solar farms is beginning to be a thing. What kind of studies are we doing to, to have our citizens feel more at ease? You know, when we come to these things that have accurate information on-
Yeah.
You know, because we can go to Google and Google, you know, tells a lot of different things. It depends on which site you goes to. It would be great if there was, are we having studies on what this can do to the land and to the public? I mean-
Only one. Um, I only have one copy left actually because, uh, of this, but it's a white paper that NC State has done, um, along with the NC Clean Tech, uh, Clean Energy Technology Center that they have in Raleigh. Um, I'm happy to provide this, since I only have one copy, to either Barry or the county manager, um, so that they can send it along to you.
Now, more important, I think, if you would send us the link, that we can get it on our website so that the general public could have access.
Yes, we make note of that. Yes, because it is readily available online, yep.
Okay.
Quick question. With that study, uh, has there even been enough research? Because like you said, the solar farms are fairly new. Is there even enough research out here to even have good information to even put out at this point? Because how many solar farms have been taken down at this point?
Yeah, I can let, uh, my colleague, Chris, he's more of the technology expert, but I, I will say that, you know, North Carolina is, you know, newer to solar than it's some of the west, uh, west coast states, um, you know, specifically thinking about Texas. They've started to decommission some sites there, and there's, um, recycle, recycling, uh, businesses out there now that will come in and take the, um, all the equipment out because, you know, they're, they're salvage value in those equipment as well. So that hasn't really happened here in, in North Carolina yet. We're about five years from probably the earliest ones that are going to be decommissioned here, but, um, you know, Chris can speak more to the, the studies and the, how long solar has been kind of, you know-
I mean, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that's, that's a statement made because, you know, we, we go off of, you know, getting some information that can say anything, but, you know, at the end of the day, we have, it's not a lot of research out here, you know what I mean? You know, one time they, they say microwaves are great, and something come out 20 years later, microwaves are bad for you, you know what I mean? And, and everything else. So, you know, I just think that hasn't been enough time to really have good studies on anything just yet, but we'll see what the future holds.
Yep, and I will make sure to send this, uh, the link over to the white paper.
Thank you.
When this is decommissioned, if it is, who's responsible for that?
Our company is. So we have a, we have individual, um, leases with our landowners, and that's a, that's a section in the lease, so if we don't do that, they're able to come and come, come at us from a legal perspective.
I just wanted to hear you say that.
It's in there.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any more questions?
I did just quickly want to point out as well that in the affidavit that was handed up previously, um, for Mr. Nick Kirkland, who was our appraiser, there is a section that cites to a thesis study that was done by a gentleman at ECU, um, that specifically looked at how a solar farm impacts, um, a neighboring residential property. And, uh, Mr. Kirkland is available to the extent that you have any questions regarding any of that research that he's included, um, in his study that was attached to the affidavit. So I did just want to make sure the board was aware of that in case there were any specific questions as to that. If it helps, this was explicitly done, I, I was previously sworn, Nick Kirkland. Um, it's on page 20 of the impact study that was submitted. It was a master thesis that was like an interview survey style of neighbors next to solar farms as well as people who live nearby to solar farms, just asking their general thoughts on solar farms. Are they generally negative, positive? What, what are their thoughts on it? Uh, we include it because the, the most, the majority of the respondents are either positive or neutral about the solar farms once they are installed. However, there's a lot of negative comments regarding solar farms explicitly within the lack of information in the approval process and prior to construction, which is e- exactly what tends to happen and what you as board are commonly hearing. Um, however, the, this is a, a study that was done as part of his master's thesis, and it just shows that once they are in ground and that everything has been done and built according to how they've been proposed, most, most of the nearby neighbors and neighborhoods are showing either positive or neutral responses to the solar farms. However, during the approval process, that's when most people would provide it with the highest negative marks. So, and that, that's on page 20 of the impact study that we submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing. All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I make one aside of the public hearing's closing?
Yes, well, I was-
Can you close?
I, I just landed, I was fixing to say-
Okay.
It's closed, you can speak now.
All right, good. Uh, I, I move that, uh, we approve the special use permit for the Stevens Mill Solar Energy Facility. That's subject to the conditions that- Subject to the conditions that have been made.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion before we vote?
That's based on what y'all just walked outside and-
Correct.
That's what I said. Thank you again for all you've done and getting with the citizens and working. I know it's-
Thank you.
Pass five to one. All right, Mr. Parker, are we at TA 11?
Okay, let's move back to new business. Item number 18 is a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price GMP for the new DSS and H facility and the GMP contract amendment with TA 11, subject to approval by the county attorney. I think Mr. Brett Bond is here with TA 11 to discuss. Good morning.
I'm Scott, with TA 11, pre-construction director, and-
Brett Bond.
Brett who?
Bond. We've met.
So we would just let, let, like to, um, fill you in on where we're at with our guaranteed maximum price. I'll, I'll share some numbers with you, and then I'll let Brett talk about our schedule, proposed schedule, um, and then we're certainly here to answer any questions that you have. We, as you know, have been under contract for just about two years to help with the pre-construction process of the project and develop budgets along the way. On March 16th, we held a open, um, bid for prime contractors at the Maxwell Center. At that time, we opened, uh, 87% of the cost of work. And one week later, um, we opened the additional 13% of the cost of work. The result of those openings resulted in a guaranteed maximum price of $30,034,486. And just to, uh, let you know, if you don't have the figures in front of you, the last budget that we did back in, um, the August, September timeframe of 2022, we were at $31,581,675. So we actually, uh, in the public bid process, we were actually able to come in under our last budget, $1,547,188. And with that, I'll let Brett fill, fill you in on the proposed, um, schedule that we're proposing for.
So, um, the most recent schedule, I think, that we've sent to the county, um, we're right on schedule as far as reviewing the GMP. We actually showed that starting on April 7th of this month. And just going through the typical pre-con process, it showed the start date. If, if we do have approvals and we get contracts in place, it showed the start date of June 1. I know we're trying to expedite that a little bit now, and then to keep it simple, really, it all depends on how today goes and, and really the, the rest of the week. Scott, you already got the amendment to the contract, to the original contract to put this GMP in place. So depending on if that went, went well, we did get that all executed, we can possibly move that construction start date up a full month, um, to start by 5/1 versus 6/1. Looking at a 17-month total duration, right now, the schedule that I'm looking at here, uh, the most recent one on paper shows the completion of October 29th, so we would try and push that up to be done by September 29th of '24.
Yeah, 24th. Don't say 29.
Yeah, September 29th of '24.
I'm about to have stroke over here.
Yeah, that's right.
So was I.
But, uh, yeah, excuse me, yeah, September, I'm still on October 29th of, uh, '24, being 100% complete with all inspections done, so we're going to try and expedite that by a month, depending on how these next few weeks play out.
Might strike for a different reason, though.
But if there's any questions as far as once we go to construction or pre-con, just we're here to answer them.
Well, I do, I have a couple of questions. So from what I'm understanding, if this is approved today, you can, you're going to have authorization to proceed. Is that correct?
Do-
I'm looking for a head nod out of that.
We'll go to the next stage and just getting the amendment to the contract and then start proceeding.
So once, once that, that takes place, I think the first item of business, of course, is site prep. And, uh, is that company ready to go ahead and start site prep?
Yes, sir. We have, um, we have went ahead and met with some of the key subcontractors, particularly that one, um, to get his clearing crew lined up, um, so they are-
He's ready to proceed.
Yes, sir. That clearing activity, I mean, it is, is a good bit of clearing, so we can start that while we go through the buyout process of all the other trades as well.
Well, and that, that's my point, you know, let's, we know we've got to get this, this effect, you know? My argument has been, we should have already cleared it, but at any rate, we are where we are, and I do not want that, uh, holding us up any further. So whatever we can do to expedite them starting their site work, we need to do that. That is based on, if we approve it, correct? We are in agreement on that.
And the, the, um, site work company is aware that we're trying to protect as many of the oaks around our perimeter as we can, correct?
Yeah, if it's outside the disturbance, yes, sir.
Right, okay. We don't want any pine trees.
We, we went through that and scouted that all pine trees good.
But that'll, that'll help us on our redesign of the landscape stuff.
We need a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price GMP for the-
So moved.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion before we vote?
You say you moved.
I, I moved, I moved.
I'm glad you said that in public. You just can't help yourself, can you? You're easy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, go to work.
All right, moving-
Pass five to one.
Under new business on 222, it's a motion to approve a agreement between the County of Wayne and the Roosevelt Group contingent on approval by the county attorneys. Uh, this is our annual contract with the, uh, Roosevelt Group, uh, for their lobbying efforts in Washington for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. This is a contract that used to be through friends of Seymour. It's now directly contracted through the, uh, city of Goldsboro and the county. It's a $60,000 total contract, our portion of it, which is $30,000. And we'd be looking for approval of that contract.
Madam Chair, I move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion before we vote?
So it's 60 total?
60 total.
30 for each?
30 for person, for, for entity.
I have a couple of questions. What is, uh, what are they actually lobbying?
The efforts include the attention focused on the execution of specific installation requirements that will make the difference during the BRAC, base realignment, enclosure, and future resourcing and forced structure decisions. Systems with strength, weakness, opportunities, and threat, which is the SWOT analysis and execution. Outreach are tailored for the Pentagon, Air Force, and Capitol Hill audience. Strategic guidance to secure new missions, pursuit of partnerships, and shared services agreements, and enhanced visibility for the base and its importance to the Air Force mission. Should the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County seek additional support utilizing the full resources of the Roosevelt Group, this agreement can be modified to reflect those changes in the future, if that's what they're offering.
And when we were at the city, uh, when I was with the city, I couldn't, uh, find anything that, that was beneficial in continuing to pay this group for lobbying, uh, for the base. It was, it's nothing. You know what I mean? And it sounds good and everything, but you, uh, I don't know how many, you know, know anything about the military, you know what I mean? I don't know how much lobbying you can do there when it comes to them making decisions on what's best strategically for the military. Um, so I'm always quite confused with the, the supporter of this group and, you know, continuing to spend money that could possibly go somewhere else, you know? Um, I think that's something that we need to look at seriously, you know? Uh, we do say we're doing a lot of stuff here for the base and things like that. That money can be spent here a lot better to support the base than sending them to Washington to do probably basically nothing, but sound good. So that is something that the board needs to think about. That's all, I just wanted to mention that, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in my, uh, experience with the Roosevelt Group, which had been not a whole lot, but, uh, I feel like that now that the Roosevelt Group is going to be answering directly to the city and the county, uh, puts us in a much better position to, to question them, uh, on what the benefits are of having a lobbyist for Seymour Johnson, uh, because we, you know, they won't really be asking for anything, uh, but now that they're going to be answering directly to the city and the county, uh, we certainly have the freedom to, to ask questions and, and determine whether we think that they're benefiting the county. And in the past, I don't feel like we really had that, that luxury.
I want to say one more thing. I think that, you know, anytime you're donating money, you're supposed to question where it comes from.
Well, I'm, I'm not questioning that.
Where, where it comes from the past or whatever, before we even gave it to the group that was previously giving it to, that's why I questioned it when I was with the city. I think we should be questioning it a lot more now before we even give them this $30,000. We need more answers, in my opinion, of, of what's the benefit, you know? It's, it's a lot of different areas around here that could use 30, $30,000 versus just giving it to them to so-called lobby for the military. We don't have anything close to the amount of money that Seymour Johnson Air Force Base is, is allotted, and we're, we're lobbying for, for what? You know what I mean? I, I just, I just don't get that. I really don't, never have, never understood it, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My concern is, um, and I think I, I voiced this earlier, is that the Roosevelt Group hasn't come to us and even speak to us. You know, I understand their lobbyists, and I understand that there was another group that initially was, had a relationship with them, and they- that initially was, had a relationship with them, and they were taking the city and the county's money. I understand that. But I think that it wouldn't have been, I don't think it's too hard to set up a meeting and present to this board and let them know what they're going to be advocating for, for the base. I understand that there are needs. We need new jet fighters, all those things. But I don't, I agree with Commissioner Foster, are they going to be able to get those things? So, you know, I would suggest that if we, if possible, if we could hold off, at least get a video call from the Roosevelt Group before we make our decision.
Mr. Crump, has the Roosevelt Group even been approached about coming before the board and given us any information?
We're not under contract currently. This past fiscal year, prior to that, they came to the Maxwell Center and did a presentation. But somehow the contract last year was lost in the mix between the Friends of Seymour and the city and county, and I was unaware of their agreements that had been made. So we never even paid them for last year.
And that was, that's one of the reasons for them answering to the city and the county now, because of the mix-up last year and, you know, contract getting lost and ain't pulling fingers at anybody, but I just, I still feel like that we can get more out of them now that they're answering to the city and the county.
Is that something we can do? Mr. Crump, it is going to set up and have them do a presentation?
I doubt they will come here. We can ask for a video.
Video, whatever.
But I doubt they're going to come here currently unless they're under contract.
Would you be satisfied with it?
Yeah, a video conference would be fine.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Madam Chair, I'm just, I just want to state that I, you know, I wouldn't want to vote until I actually heard from, from them, you know? That's just my position.
Madam Chair, could I amend my motion to include a notification to the Roosevelt Group to make some type of a presentation to this board within the next 90 days?
Okay. Motion on the floor today, have a presentation, a video, whatever, within 90 days?
Do we need 90 days?
Well, within 90 days.
Within 90 days.
So we're voting on the contract and for them to do a presentation within 90 days? Is that correct?
That's correct.
You haven't voted yet?
Yeah.
Maybe we'll have later. Okay.
Mr. Crump, were you going to vote?
I'm sorry?
Were you going to vote?
Well, that is an option, huh?
It is. I'll get that established.
Okay, great.
Now, moving on to number 23, is a motion to approve the 20...
I apologize. The commissioners are not allowed to abstain.
Why is that an option?
No, it is not. So that would count as a yes, is that correct, Mr. Parker?
It counts as a yes under your rules.
That shouldn't be a yes.
All right, let me, let's get this clear, because this is the first time this has happened. So you have to offer the option of abstain, but if you select abstain, it will be counted as a yes vote. Am I correct?
If you, if you don't, if you don't vote, it's under your rules, it's counted as a positive vote.
You can only abstain if you have a conflict of interest, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's not a conflict of interest, so.
Okay.
We now know the rules.
You don't like it, you don't like it.
Thank you.
27 on that.
We're on 20.
Are you settled?
Yes, sir, we are, thank you.
Motion to approve the 2023-2024 agreement and budget between Wayne County and the North NC Economic Development Region. This is the three-county region that we do economic development with, including Wayne, Lenore, and Green Counties. In your documentation, you see a new contract for this coming year, and you also have an attached budget amendment, or budget, not a budget amendment, but an attached budget, if I can locate it. Yeah. Shifting so many papers. Our budget increases though to $217,000, I think is what it is.
Was it $211,000?
Maybe it's $211,000.
$747?
Yeah, if you got it in front of you.
Well, I'm just...
I don't have it in my agenda, so.
I wrote down $21747.77.
It increased to that from $175 for this current year.
Yes.
Of course, with that is the addition of an additional employee that would be in project supervision, project development, which was much needed. I still think this is a good, thank you. The actual number is $211,741.77, which is our share. The other counties went up accordingly as well. The NC DOT reduced their amount of funding into the program, and we did add an additional staff person there. So I think for the return on investment, it's a pretty good deal for Wayne County to continue investing in it and...
How many counties is it?
Three-county region, it's Green, Lenore, and Wayne County. And this is, this would be our third year, going into our third year with this.
What, do you know what the other two counties are putting in?
Green Counties is $31,879.67, and Lenore County is $97,303.58.
And with this, you said that we getting a good deal for the price, correct?
Yes, sir.
What are we getting for, for that?
Well, we used to fund our own economic development office. I'm not sure of the total budget for that office, but it was in excess of $500,000, I'm sure. What we've done in the past two years is the savings that we kept from not running our own economic development office, we put into product development with shell buildings. I think we've had the most activity in economic development and new announcement of businesses that I've ever seen in 23 years here, in the last two years. And I just think, you know, when you join the region, they're touting the global transpark as an economic attractor for industry, for the surrounding counties, and looking at economic development as a regional approach is something new. And I think it's probably where the rest of the state is headed over time, so.
I was just looking, I mean, I know Lenore County is doing a lot over there with economic development as well.
Yeah, well, that's part of, they're part of this.
Yes, I'm just saying for us to be putting in almost three times the amount, you know, it's like, are they working as hard for us as they're working for Lenore County? And then what all does this include in economic development for the region? Because, you know, I understand shell buildings and bringing certain businesses here, but also, I mean, economic development means so much more to me with just, you know, people don't even understand, like, hey, you bring a Home Depot here, that's...
It doesn't deal with retail sales. That's more of a chamber of commerce activity than a...
But that's still economic development, though. You know what I mean, in a sense?
Right. This is more manufacturing, industrial trades.
Yeah, so that's, that's what, that's what I think we also need to be putting the resources into, because, I mean, you know, you're talking to a company that brings 70 jobs here versus you, we're building shell buildings and things like that, and that company might bring 30, 40 jobs here.
Right.
I think that, you know, kind of sort of focusing on different things with, like I said, I think it includes economic development, not just retail. I think it's all one thing, because it's all about growing the county, you know, and it's more than just a manufacturer that's growing this county. You know what I'm saying, and whatnot? You know, you put in a Home Depot, you have people coming from 45 miles away just for that, when you only have a manufacturer that people just go there to work every day and they're done. You know what I'm saying? So that's, that's my main thing. You know, I think that we need to look at things a little bit different as far as moving this place along for the future, but thank you for that information.
The economic development part of it, as far as the shell buildings, I mean, it brings in a company, whether it's 30 people or 50 people, but extends out far more than that because they're going to do business with other businesses in town which would expand their business. So it just, it expands out more than just bringing in that, and that's, that's the difference between that and the retail part.
I mean, you can say that, but if a company comes in and they're shipping all their stuff in, how much other businesses is happening around? You know what I'm saying? And I mean, you said, I mean, people only look at it from one end.
Well, we visited one this past last week or whatever it was, and they're, they're doing a lot of business. It's a big business that we have tracked it here, and they're actually doing a lot of business with local vendors, which is, which helps put Lenny back in the common.
But anyway. That's great, that's one. But once again, like I said, we still need to look at other areas of development for Wayne County.
I agree, I agree with that.
And it's, we're only focused on one thing, you know what I mean? And we praise and we brag about shell buildings and this and that, but, you know, it's still way much more than that. You know what I mean? There's counties our size across, across the United States that have way more just going on in that county than what we do. It's like we're stagnant around here when it comes to so many different things, you know? We have an Air Force Base here, we have, you know, we have, we have a good support system, we have a state facility, all of those things, you know what I'm saying? People here that spend money, you know what I mean? And we want to try to keep every dollar that we can here instead of going to other places and spending it. So I think that we need to focus, focus on, you know, other sections of economic development, in my opinion.
Agreed, that's right. And we praise them for keeping their business local this past two, and several people.
I agree with Commissioner Foster. I actually talked to Chip pertaining to us having someone that could attract businesses. I mean, we need it because there, every other county that's adjacent to us, they're getting companies that we don't have, or they're getting companies that we already have, and we're going to lose some of those people that are going to be coming, that used to come to our area because we had those, those retail businesses. So we definitely need to keep growing. We need to have somebody that's going to search out these companies and get them here.
Well, you need to have a discussion with the, with the other boards that have control over that, so we can try to attract some.
Madam Chair?
Because all those, all those require sewer for the most part, so leave it at that.
Yes, Commissioner Drucke.
I will make a motion that we approve the agreement and budget between Wayne County and the North Carolina Economic Development Region.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. No more discussion? Please vote. As five to one.
You move on now to your public comments section, Madam Chair.
Yes, both, do we have anybody sign it?
Okay, moving on to county managers' report. And since it's 11 o'clock, I'm going to not have any comments today. Thank you.
All right, we'll start with our commissioners. Commissioner Foster?
Uh, no comment.
Okay. Mr. Wade?
This is, this is out of the norm, it's not any county business, but I just wanted to wish my mom a happy birthday. We had opportunity to salute her this weekend at the firehouse, and it was just wonderful, you know, to see your mother, you know, age gracefully, someone who brought you to the serve. So thank you, Mom, I love you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Drucke?
Again, today was a good day for DSS and Health Department, and finally seeing this project begin. We've all worked hard for it. It's been many years in the making, so I want to thank everybody for all their efforts. Thank you.
Commissioner Grubbe?
Thank you, ma'am. Our, this past Thursday, we received a delivery of our mobile command truck housed over at Poggi Fire Department. They were gracious enough to let us store it there until we get a facility built to house it. I want to thank everybody had input on that and getting it delivered. Thanks to Joe for going out and taking some pictures and putting it on the website, let us do it. Had a little fun with the sheriff. After he left, I called Sheriff Bizzle over in Johnston County and acquired a license plate, Johnston County license plate and a star, and I placed it there on the truck with him, and he walked around it three times before he saw the star, and then he said, mm, you know, I did get that off for, for Commissioner's season. And then I told him that I did it. Of course, he figured it out really quick. That's, that's, I think that's everything, but I do have one thing. We, I've got some dear friends that are having some health issues, and I got a phone call this morning, it just, it worries me that we've got a lot of young people getting cancer. I don't know why. And a lot of them work in the same facility. A lot of them grew up in this, in a different area, or another area of the county, and I have no idea what the issue is, but, I mean, just, just grateful. That's it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, madam. Chair, I keep mine short. I just wanted to thank the board for your support in supporting Wayne Community College. I really didn't, you know, I take the courses after years and years through the fire service and other, other things, until I got to the board out there, I did not really realize the importance of the, not only Wayne Community, but all 58 of the community colleges in the Gulf of State for the amount of work and the effort that they, that they put into training people for the workforce. And again, I just want to thank this board for supporting them this morning. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I piggyback off what everybody said. I want to thank the board for today. We've had a good session. Thanks for Wayne Community College, because, like I said, that is an investment in our community, and I want to thank Dr. Pfeifer and her staff for bringing that to our attention, and I'm glad that we could work it out, because that is a necessary tool for our community to train our workforce. And that's all I have.
Right. Let me follow up on that also. Me also sitting on that board, I would do my due diligence in trying to make sure that they don't use that to me dollars, but, you know, but thank y'all for your support in case they do need it. But we're going to try our best to not to use much of it, if any.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we have a closed session?
Yes.
Yes, we do, indeed. Closed session.
All right, we will go into closed session.
Subdue.
Got a motion on the floor to go in closed session?
It's for the purpose of preserving attorney-client privilege and also to discuss economic development.
We are now in closed session. All right. We're going to recess to the Maxwell Center for lunch.
All right.